Okay, so I'd like to welcome everybody to the Zoom meeting of the Monday or the Sykesville Mayor and Town Council for Monday, January 11. This meeting is taking place via Zoom US teleconference in order to give public comment or listen to the meeting. You can call 1-301-715-8592. The meeting ID is 842-748-28715. And the password is 177238. You will not be able to enter the meeting. Well, we're on the start time here. So you're good on that. Once you enter, you will be placed on mute. So our first item is to call the order, call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a brief moment of silence. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moment of silence. Okay. All right, sir. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. Please alert staff that you would like to make a public comment by pressing star nine, which will raise your hand and we can be recognized. So I'll give that a second and then see if there's any public comments before we get started. If you have a public comment on a topic, you can wait until we get to one of those items and then comment as well. So just again, star nine to raise your hand. Okay. Any, any hands raised, Carrie?
No.
Okay. All right. Well, then our first item on tonight's agenda is the minutes from November 23rd, 2020. Has everyone had a chance to review those?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, wait a minute. We're on the, yes, correct. Thank you. Minutes. Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, great. Well, then the consent agenda is approved. Our first item in new business is to consider and discuss and act on resolution number 2021-01. This is for the alcohol at DSC events and should have seen us the attached agenda here. So anybody have any questions or comments about any of these?
I have a comment. It's pretty simple. I think it's just a typo, mayor. Sunday, farmers markets, May 16, 23, and 33. The months seem to drag on these days, but I'm quite sure that's probably supposed to be a three zero.
Yes. Thank you for catching that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that would be, let's see.
It's the 30th. I checked.
Yeah, thank you. Perfect. So we just need to make that the 30th, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
There was another typo that I didn't catch. It's the 4th of July parade is Saturday, July 3rd, 2021.
Oh, I even looked at the calendar to see if it was Saturday, the 3rd, but didn't see it was the wrong year there.
Okay, we get a pass in the first month. Okay. All right. So we have two corrections then. Anything else in there? So we got the 30th for May and then 21 for July. Anybody, anything else? Anybody? Comments, questions?
Motion to approve resolution 2021-01.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And again, any abstentions? Okay, so that resolution passes. The DSC is good to go. All right, there hopefully, we're hoping that all this stuff gets, gets off. God, I hope we can pull it off this year. Okay, and then our next item is the holidays. Holidays, consider and discuss an act on 2021 meeting and holiday dates.
Yes, mayor, typically this is a consent agenda item, but because of a little bit of overlap on some of our holidays this year, we wanted to bring it as an actual agenda item, just to get everybody's kind of sign off on what we plan on doing. So as stated there in the report, both Christmas Eve and Christmas Day are two holidays that the town of Sykesville recognizes. Christmas Eve falls on a Saturday this, this coming year. So, or this year. So it would be observed the Friday before, which is obviously Christmas Eve, and we already have that day off. So what we're recommending is that the Monday following Christmas be observed as, as a holiday rather than the Friday before, since we already have that day off. And then the same, same kind of issue pops up for New Year's Eve in that New Year's Day is going to be observed on that Friday, which we usually get a half day off for. So we're saying for that half day is just a grant, a floating holiday, which we can, a floating half day holiday for employees, which we can track internally. So again, we just wanted to bring those to your attention and ask for your, your approval with, with those amendments.
Hey, any questions on that? Think it works pretty good. So we talked about this a little bit. So anybody else got any questions or concerns about it?
I'll make a motion then to approve the holiday schedule with the recommended amendments.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that proved and then the next one will be the Mayor and Town Council meetings scheduled. I think that might have been the one I missed out here. Let's see.
While you're digging that up in, I think there's a typo on there as well. May 10th and 24th has an asterisk for the 24th, but the 24th is the Monday. Um, so it should be Tuesday, the 25th.
Okay. Right, correct. Okay, so we need to adjust that. Anything else? Tuesday. Yep. So anything, everything else look good?
I think so. So we need to make a motion for this one as well, correct?
Yeah, make a motion to approve. Yes.
Yeah, so I'll do that. I make a motion to approve the Mayor and Town Council meeting schedule for 2021.
And just with the one correction of just-
Yes, with the one amendment as noted, May 25th instead of 24th.
All right, um, do we have second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that's approved.
So just one question on this one form. It doesn't have the half day floating as one of the paid holidays. Is that a oversight or should it be on there? I just don't know if it should be on there or not on the list.
We, we didn't want to put it on there because we didn't know if it was going to get approved or not. So yeah, we'll make that correction. That's all.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, then our next item is the COLA increases. So these were approved in the budget.
Yes, mayor, these, the two and a half percent was part of the FY 2021 budget. However, there was a caveat added to it that they were not going to take effect until the town had an opportunity to verify that revenues were, were hitting certain benchmarks, you know, just because of the uncertainty around COVID-19. And then before they would take effect, we would actually bring it back before council to have you vote on it. Obviously, since we're here tonight, you know, we're comfortable saying that our revenues have been kind of hitting what we expected them to hit with, with little or no impact from, from COVID-19. So, so we're comfortable going ahead and implementing these and making them retroactive back to July 1, 2020. So what we're recommending is to approve the implementation of the FY 2021 COLA increases, again, retroactive back to July.
Okay. Any comments or questions on the COLA?
I have none.
Okay, we have a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve the implementation of the FY 2021 COLA increases retroactive to July 1st, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, COLA increases are approved. All right, and then our, so that concludes our new business items. The next Mayor and Town Council meeting will also be a Zoom meeting, and that will be on January 25th, 2021. We have some volunteer opportunities still available on the HDC, the Spark, the Police Auxiliary, and a crossing guard, which probably be great to fill it for next year. Anyway, I don't know if we're going to be doing a lot of crossing, but you can email the town at Sykesville.net for more information about volunteering. I guess some of the kids are back to school, right? Here in Carroll, which is pretty wild, so. Might need a crossing guard. All right, and then a staff update. So Joe, I'll start with you on that.
Yeah, just a couple of quick things that just want to make sure everybody's aware that at our next meeting on the 25th, it's going to be somewhat budget heavy. We are going to be introducing our first budget revision for FY 2021. Plus, we'll also have the presentation of our FY 20 audit. So just want to get everybody mentally prepared for, for lots of numbers being thrown around next meeting. And then to prepare you a little bit for the FY 21 budget, keep in mind that a lot of the projects that we had scheduled last fiscal year did end up getting delayed. So we're actually putting them in current fiscal year budget. So the number, the actual adjustment's actually pretty high, typically higher than, than you would see on a budget revision, but it's just because we're pulling a lot of those projects, those capital projects that were approved last year into current fiscal year, because that's when we actually got around to doing them. And then I want to get into the habit of giving everybody an update at least once a month on Warfield. So, you know, started the, started the new calendar year. So let's start off with the bang, talk about Warfield. So I know last time we talked about them, they were waiting on, or they were updating some fiscal impact and economic studies. I can report that they have not actually received those yet. They, they do expect to have them this week. Once they're received and reviewed, we will schedule a time where they can be submitted to council and actually put the information presented to you so that you can ask questions and talk to the, the owners about what those studies actually say. They've also informed staff that they have done their annual roofing evaluation. That was done back in November. Several buildings will be getting some, some minor repair work done, with the exception of building W. There's a little more extensive repair that they're going to be doing out there. Whenever they have exact pricing or exactly what work is going to be done, they'll submit that to us so that we know kind of what they're doing. We also want to let everybody know that on the roof on building F was actually replaced in 2019, with the exception of the porch on the west side of the building. That porch is actually being rebuilt as we speak. So they hope to have that project done before the end of the, the month is over. One of the things that these repairs have prompted, as a matter of fact, I just received some of this information just before this meeting started. So again, I just want to let you, let you know that we've received it. But other than that, you know, we haven't really dug into any of the, the specifics on the request, but based on all these repairs, it has prompted the owners to renew their requests for waiving some of the soft cost limits on some of the escrow accounts, as well as at least partially some of the dollar for dollar requirements there within escrow one. However, again, our concern remains that there's uncertainty with how this project is going to be moving forward. So until we solve some of those issues, we're, we're not really asking counsel unless there's an objective objection from some of the council members. We're not proceeding with any of those requests for, for council at this point. Again, we'd rather get a better understanding of how the project's going to be moving forward, plus what information's in those studies that, you know, hopefully they'll be receiving this week before we decide what, if anything, to do with adjustments to those escrow accounts. And then finally, and then finally, again, just a reminder, if anybody's watching live on Facebook, Christmas tree pickup does end this week. So we want to make sure everybody, if you haven't dedecorated your tree yet, some of the pictures we've seen online of Christmas trees this year, I don't know if it's, if it's just been a dry year, but have been pretty hilarious with, with people in the, in the Christmas tree needles all over their house. So, but again, Christmas tree pickup is, is, ends this week. So, so please get your Christmas tree out. Great. That's all I have, mayor.
Thank you. All right. Well, let's start with the treasures report then.
All right. Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see everybody in this new year. At this time, I'd like to present the December Treasuries Report. We're at the six month mark, just like that, which is kind of hard to believe. It's already halfway through the year. So far, I think we're, we'll mark, you know, especially the revenue is looking pretty solid. We're at like about 62% already of what we budgeted that we thought we'd get in, which is pretty good. We still have, you know, the income tax is definitely will be coming in much later. Obviously, May and June is when we'll get the income tax. We should easily equal what we have budgeted for that. The real estate tax, which you see up above there, is definitely due pretty soon. We should get another pretty good hit here. I would say within the next couple of weeks. So that should help us, you know, obviously maintain the revenue piece. So, so far so good. So no deviations there to, to worry about, at least at this point. In terms of expenses, we're pretty much online. This was a quiet month, except for unfortunately, we had to pay, fortunately, whatever the case would be, we had to pay the employer piece of the retirement plans, which got to be pretty healthy. The employee piece as well as the LEOPS piece came in, and then LEOPS piece actually came in a little higher than we had budgeted. So we definitely have to pay attention to that next year as that climbs in terms of we get more staff. And the percentages, for some reason, are growing at the moment. I'm not sure why Maryland State is starting to raise all that. Something we'll probably have to look into, but the LEOPS obviously came in about 19 grand higher than what we expected, which was a little bit of a pain point, but we'll do a much better job budgeting that next year. In terms of our audit, it's technically still ongoing, but I hope to wrap it up tomorrow morning to finalize the last piece there. So, and I think they're scheduled to present the next meeting. I'm not 100% sure, but I'm 95% sure they want to present the audit findings and the audit report next meeting, next council meeting. So I guess stay tuned for that and fingers crossed. And I know you're all eagerly looking forward to that. And then finally, just to note that I've, I have made it a whole year now. I'm, anniversary was this, this last week. So I've managed to make it through, and I appreciate everyone's help and cooperation and patience. And I look forward to another good year.
Congratulations, Craig. We're happy to have you.
Thanks.
Yep, thank you, Craig. I'm glad you made it through the year. And, and thank you for adjusting to, I know it's been a bit of an adjustment for you.
I'm off parole now, right? I can drink. Don't want any office hours and stuff like a for all.
And Craig worked-
Just kidding, kidding, totally kidding.
No, it's okay. And you worked, you worked diligently throughout the pandemic. I know you were, you were here a lot. So thank you so much for everything you've done and getting up to speed. So yeah, so we're glad to have you.
And not, and obviously if you have any questions for the latest treasures report, let me know. And I'll be more than happy to get back to you.
Okay. All right, great. Any, are there any questions now for Craig? Anybody got any questions about the budget?
No.
Okay. All right. And then, yeah, so we should have a budget heavy meeting, as mentioned, next meeting on the 25th. Obviously, if we have the audit coming in and then some additional budget stuff could be, could be robust. We'll try to get that info out to everybody a little bit early for review, hopefully before the meeting. So you get a chance to look at it all. Okay. All right. And then next is public safety report. Chief, you're up.
Can you hear me okay?
I think so. Yeah, we can hear you now.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Happy New Year.
Yep.
I have not changed my name, but as you can see, I'm using my wife's computer at home. So apologize for that. We're going to be talking about the public safety report that's covering the period November 17th through January 5th. It's a rather lengthy report, since it did cover about a month and a half. I apologize if the, the top of your, that first form was cut off on your packet. Barbara was out, so I took care of printing this out and I inadvertently cut off the top. But the period is November 17th through January 5th. During that time, we handled 1,144 total events. So there it is. Thank you, Carrie, for putting the title on top. Again, 1,144 events. Some of the highlights were 11 community policing events, 40 patrol checks, or excuse me, 40 foot patrols, 769 patrol checks. And another thing that was cut off was the traffic enforcement initiatives. We actually had 81 of those. I don't know if you can see that on your, your form or not, but it should be 81 traffic enforcement initiatives, again, for a total of 1,144 events. We also handled during this period, 23 incident reports, which should have been reflected in pages two and three of your packet, actually two, three, and four. And I would entertain any questions on any of those incidents, if you have any.
Any, any questions for the chief?
I don't have any.
I don't either.
Thank you. You know, just a couple of incidents I did want to highlight, which, which involved excellent police work. The case number 00256, which involved thefts from motor vehicles in the Raincliff community. This was a great job, excellent response by our former, now former Officer Brandonberg, who was able to get over there quickly. Again, the Ring cameras, Ring security cameras were a huge asset to us in, in this case. And Officer Kirchner followed up on this investigation, and it resulted in 11 total separate victims in this case. And a multitude of charges for the person that was, was caught that night and apprehended, pretty much red-handed. So great initial response by Officer Brandonberg and even better job of follow-up investigation by Officer Kirchner.
Great job. Yeah, thank you.
It was all one person, chief?
One person. Yeah.
One person.
That had walked away from the drug rehab facility over there.
That's, that's disappointing, but I'm glad you guys got them.
Yep. Yep. Again, it was good, quick response, good use of the Ring cameras or, and a quick notification by a person who was wa, watching the Ring camera, was able to get us over there quickly with a good description of the suspect and resulted in, in an arrest and multitude of charges and the recovery of most of the property, which is very important to people. So it was good police work. Ring camera was involved in another incident on December 16th. We had, I guess you all may have heard, we had a multitude of thefts from mailboxes throughout the community. It actually started over on Gaither Road with the suspects stealing from a few mailboxes there and then ended up in our town. Six victims in all in our town had mail stolen from their mailbox, broad daylight. We did have good video of the suspects and their vehicle. Unfortunately, we weren't able to capture the tag number. And we have not yet been able to make an arrest in that case. But I think we had video from two or three different residences that was very, very valuable to us. So again, kudos to those who, who had the Ring cameras or any security cameras, because it's a very valuable tool to us. And, and we certainly rely upon it to help us with some of these cases.
And then real quick, chief, if you want to share of how everybody can share that information with you on the Ring at least.
Yes, if you text STAY SAFE, that's S-T-A-Y-S-A-F-E, to the number 555-888. That will put you into the, the system to, to register, to be a part of the Ring Neighborhood App. And then you can, if you have a ring or a nest or any of the, the various video surveillance systems, you can become part of the neighborhood app and share information with other neighbors. And that allows us to reach out to, to those who have the cameras and request video when we see something that happens in, on their neighborhood or on their road. So it's a very valuable tool. Wish everybody have.
Chief, can you please repeat that number?
Yes, it's text STAY SAFE, the word STAY SAFE to the number 555-888. Did you get that?
Yes, I did. Got me the ring for Christmas, so I'm going to sign up.
Excellent.
Yeah, there you go. And it's pretty cool, because then you can see the other communities, like if something happens in the community, it tells you too. So kind of nice, makes everybody aware of what's going on.
Do we, do we by chance have that information up on both the town website and the police website or no?
We did post that on our Facebook page at one point in time. It may be, you know, further back now in time, but I could try to pin that to the top and get that information out.
Again, probably a good idea for all the people that got one for Christmas.
Sure.
You're probably not the only one.
Right.
All right.
Just a few more things I wanted to mention real briefly. We had a very, very successful, once again, holiday gift donation drive. PFC Slares took the lead on this again for, I think this is his third year. Phenomenal job. Was able to identify a local family in need. Mother and father and five children were very much in need. And thanks to Officer Slares' initiative, we received a ton of donations. I mean, just about everything on their wish list, wish list, gift cards, even a turkey. Somebody donated a turkey. So with the help of the auxiliary, we were able to deliver all those to the family. And needless to say, there was five very happy children, opening presents Christmas morning, thanks to the generosity of our community. So thank you to all those who, who contributed. It was a very successful year, and we very much appreciate it. And I know the family did.
Yeah, that's awesome. So yeah, thank you. And definitely thank Officer Slares for, taking that on. And I know the DSC did a great job this year with the Happy Thon. So that was pretty exciting. I won't take out the thunder. Yeah, again, what I say thank you to all those donors too.
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's all I really have. We, the police department has received our first vaccine shot. I'm very happy to report that. We're all very happy to get the first one and anxiously waiting our second shot here in a couple of weeks. So that certainly makes us feel protected and much safer interacting with people on a daily basis. So thankful to the county and, and for those who, who set this up and arranged it and were able to get us in there fairly quickly. And it's a good feeling to have the first shot under our belt. So.
Yeah, that's good news. So yeah. Everybody will be out. So everybody better slow down, because now that all the officers have been vaccinated, they're going to be doing enforcement.
Picking it up again. Yeah, absolutely.
There you go. Look at. All right, any questions for the chief?
No.
Well, chief, thanks a lot. Thanks for everything and appreciate that. Get this through the holidays. Hopefully, we're going to be on to brighter days.
That's what I said.
All right. All right. So that brings us to council committee reports.
Mayor, real quick, did you want to just accept the treasures report? I know we usually do a motion.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. I'm sorry that got away from us. So yeah, we need to make a motions to accept the December.
Motion to approve December 2020 treasures report.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, great. Thanks for catching that, Joe. All right. So treasures report's approved. All right. So now we'll start in the council committee report. So we'll start with you, Anna.
Oh, yay. Um, so I misread my calendar and I missed our meeting. We had a meeting on December 15th and we had one application. The DCS had requested to put a mural of Welcome to Sykesville mural with the map of the town on the side of the building where the acupuncture business is. So where there's that little cutout that has the steps that go up to the parking lot by the townhouse on that side of the building, there was going to be a painted mural says Welcome to Sykesville. Carrie, you can fill in if oh. Um, Carrie, I'm sorry. I thought I got cut off. I'm sorry. I apologize. I enjoyed that. I was like, darn it. I hit the exit button. Carrie, if you can fill in where I missed.
There, there wasn't much else talked about at that meeting. It was, it was pretty quick and simple.
Okay. Okay.
And Merrill's gonna be kicked butt, just saying.
Yeah. It, it looks nice and it's right in town, so everybody knows where everything is. So it's a good um, directional welcome. Um, and I don't know if we're gonna have them anything on our agenda for this uh, January.
We don't have anything yet.
Okay. T, TBA for our HDC for January.
Okay. All right. And then Parks and Rec, Stacy will do you next.
Sure. Thank you. Um, so Parks and Rec has not met since our last town council meeting. Um, but I personally met with um, the executive director of Downtown Sykesville Connection, Julie Del Maria, with respect to uh, Keep Sykesville Beautiful's. Um, twenty twenty-one work plan, um, discuss some grant opportunities. Um, how, how we're gonna go about building a website and um, have also made plans to meet with the, I guess you would call her the, she's the admin of the Facebook page for uh, Trash Troopers um, in, in uh, which is a South Carol mostly Eldersburg, Woodbine, um, uh, Sykesville type uh, group of uh, concerned and, and active uh, community members with respect to reduction of, of trash um, in our communities. And her name's Becky Martin and she and uh, Julie and myself have a meeting planned to see what each of our organizations can offer for each other. Um, and what opportunities we have for volunteering, um, and, and uh, and this, and, and the like. So that's, that's uh, kind of a side note to Spark since uh, since Spark is part of that uh, Keep Sykesville Beautiful program. But our next formal Spark meeting is jumping around here. Going to be this month, the twenty-second, I'm sorry, the twenty-first of one, two, three, twenty-eighth of January at six P M via Zoom. That's all.
All right, great. And then up next, Leo. Yes, see.
I'm getting myself there. Happy New Year, everyone. Um, a lot of work's been done behind the scenes. The board has been meeting um, mainly with PR promotion, planning and um, finalizing the five oh one C three. So that's really been the board's focus. Um, with regard to the separate committees of the DSC, um, they've been quite a bit done. Um, specifically the Happy Thon, and I really want to thank um, not only Julie who does so much, but um, Stacy Link and Dana Alonzi for all their work for the Happy Thon. Um, putting everything together, wrapping everything, staying up till all hours of the morning, making sure it was ready. And everybody on the council and Joe and everybody else who contributed or donated to the Happy Thon, it raised almost seventeen thousand dollars and it uh, benefited seventy-eight needy children, um, who might not have had a Merry Christmas without this. So I want to thank everybody who contributed to that and especially Stacy and Dana for all their work. Um, let's see.
My thanks to you too, Leo. So thank you.
Oh, I, I'm, Billy, I was just in the background on that one. It was um, by the time I knew they were wrapping the presents, um, Stacy and Dana had it pretty much all done. So.
We enjoyed it, but thank you.
Let's see, uh, you saw the outline for the events for next year. Hopefully we will um, be able to do as much as we can on that event schedule. Um, we will keep you posted as things and I'm sure Joe will too. As things progress as to our ability to do the Art and Wine Festival, which is the first one on deck. But hopefully we really want to be able to get that done. Um, otherwise it's been a lot of grant writing, especially with the Green Committee. Um, they've applied for a kids gardening grant and Keep America Beautiful Grant. Um, Julie's been dealing with other grants with regard to youth committees and uh, let's see, um, participating in a nonprofit um, training program. Uh, but it's, it's really just been a lot of um, trying to focus on where we can get grants and you know, make up for what we didn't get this year. Um, and then the, my final point is, I know as part of our agreement, there's supposed to be a quarterly um, report given by the ma- uh, Main Street Manager with regard to where things have been going, but with COVID, we've kind of put that off. Um, I don't know if you want to have one for, I guess the January twenty-eight meeting, sounds like it's gonna be budget heavy, maybe the first meeting in February. Thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, I think that might work. What do you think, Joe? Anything you see a problem with that?
Yeah, that's no problem.
Okay. Yeah, we haven't had one in a while and obviously with these Zoom meetings, it's been a little bit harder, but um, I, I think Julie's watching online, so I'll have to put it on her calendar to give a report on our first February meeting.
Okay. All right, great. And then um, so what have you guys thought about like a plan B for May? Cause I'm like worried about that too. I mean.
Yeah, I, I don't know if we have a plan B for that yet. I guess really if, if May doesn't happen, hopefully it'll be the next next one up. Um, just the way the calendar is set up, it's not like we can then push it to another day in time, especially with um, the way wineries need to plan their year and things like that. If it, if it doesn't happen, it probably doesn't happen.
Okay.
And then we just, we just move on to the next item on the calendar.
Gotcha. Okay. Yeah, I was just wondering if they had like a, we're thinking about some contingency plan or something. Cause yeah, I'm a little I'm cautiously optimistic about May, but with this slow rollout of the vaccine, I'm a little more, I'm thinking July fourth, we might get lucky.
Yes.
Great. Anything else or?
No, that's it. Thanks.
Well, thanks, Leo. Yeah. And thanks for uh, Stacy and all Dana and uh, the DSC for everything they did for that was amazing. I mean, it was a lot of, lot of money and then a lot of work, a lot of help. So
Thanks.
Pretty awesome, man.
Oh, and there was one other thing I apologize because I just got sent a video. Um, apparently, and again, this has to do with Stacy. Um, there was a, an application made and an award was granted to um, allow for a free website, which has been donated to the pu- uh, police department. Stacy could probably speak more about this than I can because I got a video of her and two of our officers and um, Julie dancing in front of the police station. So I'm not sure what that was all about. I haven't been able to watch it yet. So Stacy?
Well, um, it's, I don't know. I'm kind of in an odd position talking about an award I won, but um, it's uh, just hold on one second.
Chief, were you in that video?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, then no, then you definitely weren't. Okay.
I'll just do it this way.
So it's a uh, it's an award that, that uh, the, the Downtown Sykesville Connection um, uh, basically applied for in my name for the Small Town America Civic Volunteer Award. Um, it's a certificate of national recognition. Um, and it was uh, something that was sponsored by Civic Plus. So um, that was awarded to, to myself on the fifth day of October.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. And it was in October and now we're just hearing about it.
I know.
Stacy, you gotta, you gotta say something.
Uh, you guys know I got a big mouth unless it's about myself, so that's fine.
And that, and that led to a donation of a website for uh, that was given to the police department. Is that right?
Correct.
That is correct. And the chief can speak to that, I think.
Okay.
Absolutely. I, I just wanted to thank you for the, that gracious donation. We've actually already started the process for the development of our own website. Which will be kind of separate from the town, but very similar. Right now, as you know, our, our website falls underneath the town's website and then there's no distinction, but uh, thanks to Stacy's generous donation, we'll be able to have our own website and it'll be state of the art and modern. So uh, we've already started the ball rolling. So we're, we're very appreciative.
Awesome.
The win, win, win. Uh, a, a great opportunity um, for, for uh, something badly needed for the um, police department. So I'm, I'm pleased and thrilled that, to be a part of it.
That's it for me.
All right. Thanks, Leo. Appreciate that. And then uh, all right, next up, we'll do Raincliff. Any, any news over at Raincliff, Jeremiah?
I just want to say thank you to Derek. Uh, you guys helped out with moving some snow. Uh, got a I don't know if it's a complaint, but uh, an inquiry anyway, uh, from the Raincliff folks. We haven't had any um, meetings uh, as of late, uh, would anticipate one happening uh, soon, but uh, how those are working right now with COVID is that um, I, I hear about them, you know, pretty close to when the meeting actually occurs. And then on two other things, uh, there is a uh, Carroll County Board of Education meeting this Wednesday, uh, which I'll go to. I did not have the opportunity to attend the December ninth meeting. And then uh, the Maryland Municipal League Legislative Committee starts up again uh, this Wednesday as well. And I'll be uh, representing the town at that session as well. And I'll report out at the next meeting. That's it, Mayor.
All right, great. Thank you. Appreciate that. And then um, Mark, you're up next, planning.
Well, there was no planning commission meeting because, well, we live in a wonderful town. Um, hopefully, I, I attribute that, some of that to COVID. Hopefully we'll have one soon. Things will get moving again.
Okay. All right. Uh, I think I got everybody, didn't I? Okay. Yeah. All right. Good. All right. And I'm looking at my screen in a vertical here. So um, and then, yeah, so not, not a whole lot's going on down at the uh, Colored Schoolhouse. Um, obviously the, the, a lot of the um, tutors, they were doing some tutors there, you know, tutoring still. And I, um, most, there's been some, there are older folks that are doing it. So they had some concerns about um, COVID obviously. So that, that's kind of been on hold a little bit. So um, Pat's trying to, you know, obviously coordinate getting some of that back going. So, cause it's been super helpful. Um, and she, by the way, too, Pat Greenwald helped out a lot, I think with some of the uh, Happy Thon too. So wanted to make sure we send a shout out to her. She helps out a lot with uh, getting some of the kids from the uh, homework club involved. Um, and then uh, Jack, so we talked to uh, Jack a little bit. I think we're gonna talk to him about updating uh, the website. Maybe to a quarterly, having some sort of quarterly update um, of different things coming. Of course, we had a little uh, COVID scare from the gate house as well. So um, and then they're redoing the kitchen at the gate house. If you're, if you're not aware, we had some termite damage and then uh, we had to get the uh, kitchen all torn out to fix the termite damage. So should be getting a new kitchen coming soon. I think uh, construction may have started on that already. And then um, the uh, we're doing some stuff outside and then there's uh, Stacy had shot an email about that too, as far as maybe considering some ADA stuff. So I think uh, that'll be on the radar coming up as well. So we'll keep you posted.
I'll be, I'm sure you guys have uh, resources, but if you need some free ones, I'll be in the form of consultation with uh, ADA access. I'll be glad to, to take part. And I think we um, skipped Councilman Grassley's uh, report.
Yep. All right. We're next. Yeah, he's popped off the screen. Thank you for your reminder. So.
Yeah, there's no, there's really no report. The merchants did not meet in December, obviously, because they were very busy in December. Um, I've heard a couple of compliments about how nice the town looked. Joe, I think uh, you probably, I think everybody was impressed with the way the town looked the first year that you're here is beautiful. Um, next merchant meeting is uh, January twenty-ninth at ten o'clock or nine o'clock. And uh, I'll let you know how that goes on our first February meeting.
Great. Thanks. Uh, yeah, we wanted to, since Jana is here, I think she was a big part of updating the Christmas decorations. Um, so Jana, thanks a lot. Everybody noticed it. I know all the town staff pitched in, but I think you were heading up getting all the decorations uh, lined up for us. So thank you. And um, everybody noticed it. We got a lot of good comments this year from all the different stuff. And Derek, I know from putting up the extra tree down there and all the, the public works guys, putting all the stuff out made a, made a difference, man. So thank you. Oh, I think especially during this time, we needed a, needed a little extra Christmas spirit in town. So.
I, if I can give a shout out to um, to the, to the uh, South Carol Lions Club, um, they uh, and, and some of their children, the member, the Lions and their, their children decorated the, the new tree under the gazebo. Um, they, they reached out to me and volunteered to do that and gave them something uh, very Christmasy to do as a family. Uh, and uh, um, and I, we all enjoyed the, or benefited from the decorations. So but yeah, a big shout out to anybody and everybody at staff level for that. I, I, driving through town, I know I'm speaking for everybody I'm looking at on this screen. It was just, it just felt like home. So, thank you.
It sure did. Yep. So thanks, everybody. All the staff appreciate that. Made a big difference, especially in a tough year like it's been this year. So everybody appreciated every little extra bit. And um, so thank you. All right. So I think that's everything on our agenda. Anything else? Did I miss anything?
I think you're good, Mayor.
All right. So we're in good shape. And again, our next meeting's on the twenty-fifth. And um, with all that.
Motion, motion to adjourn?
Perfect. We got a couple of seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any intentions? Okay, the meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you guys. Happy New Year to everybody.